Get from that guy. All right, you ready? Good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, May 19th Board of Education Special Meeting. We have Mrs. Brand, Mrs. Dow, Mrs. Zahn will not be here. I'm Mr. John Matola. Mrs. Iaccone, Mrs. Albin is here. She'll be back in a minute. Mr. Carey's not here and Mr. Fadabean's not here and Mr. Lou's not here. The reason why some of these members aren't here is that this is a special meeting that wasn't planned and they had all their obligations unfortunately, but they're going to get the videotape of this meeting tomorrow. So they'll be able to watch your comments over the weekend, okay? So why don't we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first item on the agenda is discussion of proposed recommended budget adjustments for 2011 and '12 and we're actually, the board tonight's not really going to discuss, have their own discussions. This night's for you and it's dedicated to public comment. Now let me talk about a couple of things. I see that many of you, I don't recognize your faces and it's great that you're here tonight, but I wanted to give you some background as to what's going on so you have this in perspective. The Board of Ed budget over the last two years has basically been flat increases. It's averaged a 0.2% increase and that's despite the fact that we've had a growing school student population. So for two years, the increase has been zero practically. We've been able to get by for two basic reasons. One is we did receive some federal funding. Many school districts throughout the country got the federal funding, so that helped. And our teachers and administrators during these, those contract years, they took a 0% wage increase. So that helped us tremendously. Many of you haven't felt any impact because of, because of that. But this year's different. The federal funding has dried up and the teachers who took a 0% increase and the administrators, they're due for a contract raise this July 1st. Now, for this current year coming up July 1st, we as a board requested a 4.5% increase and that's about $6.4 million over this current year's budget. And out of that amount, about $6 million of those dollars were fixed costs. Costs meaning nothing we can do about it because they deal with wages, contract benefits, medical costs, insurance, pensions, utilities. So out of the 6.4 we were requesting, 6 million or so of that are fixed costs. The Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, they cut the Board of Ed budget by $2 million even though there were, those were fixed costs. So you can figure out that we're in the hole already with the $2 million cut. Thereafter, the RTM cut an additional $800,000 from the Board of Ed budget, which put us in a further hole. So unfortunately, something has to give and we are required now to come up with $2.8 million in reductions. Now, you know, I want to say one thing. The RTM voted to cut our budget by $800,000 even though it was the very same RTM that a year ago voted for these contracts. A year ago, the RTM, a year or so ago, the RTM approved teachers' contract and administrators' contract knowing that this coming July 1st, they were going to have to fund them. But for some reason, they didn't think about that during the budgetary process. So we have an $800,000 cut from the RTM that saves the average taxpayer about $45 a year. That's from Mr. Hiller, our finance officer for the town of Fairfield. So here we are. We have a very difficult situation and we're going to vote on this on, this coming Tuesday. And we're not sure where we're going to go and we want to hear from you tonight. There's been discussion about pay for play. We asked Dr. Title to look at other options and he's looking at that, but that doesn't mean that's going away. It still could happen. And, and so that, that's where we are. There have been significant reductions that were recommended by the administration that we discussed on Tuesday. You can get this online and Dr. Title, I think, is going to be giving out some additional recommendations tomorrow, which I'm sure will be posted online, so you can look at that over the weekend. And again, our intent is to vote on this on Tuesday. So with that said, we're going to do public comment and let me read a couple of ground rules for you. During this period, the board will hear comments on this item and this item only from any citizen present at the meeting. Any single presentation must be limited to two minutes and audiovisual equipment cannot be used without the advance authorization of the chairman. The board will not hear comment on individual personnel matters or comments addressed to a specific member of the board. Decorum will be enforced. This is not an answer and question session. If you have questions for me or any board member, you can email me, call me up, or call any other board member. This is your opportunity for a two-minute period to have your say. And that's, that's what this is about tonight, okay? So with that said, there's the podium. If you want to start lining up, go ahead. And by the way, Mrs. Dyer sitting over there is our timekeeper. She'll tell you when two minutes is up and when it's up, I'm going to tell you that you have to stop. So how many people want to speak tonight?
Depends what you hear.
Okay. Well, that is a good answer. Line up and, you know, if, if, if the line's too long, you want to line up as it gets shorter, that's okay too. And please, everyone, when you come up, identify, give us your name and address for the record. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mike Barlow. Our family have been residents of Fairfield for the last 18 years. My daughter graduated from Ludlow High School.
We need your address.
66 Howard Street, Fairfield, 06824. The so-called rowdy side of Reef Road. My son plays hockey. I'm basically a one-issue person right here. Hockey is part of the culture of New England. Fairfield is part of New England. Please don't do anything to take away the hockey program from either the boys or the girls. The idea that in some way that pay for play is, is against the rules is kind of silly. There are plenty of nuances involved here. All it is, is a voluntary tax. A hockey stick already costs more than $200. You're probably aware of that. The gloves cost whatever. Everyone who plays hockey has already made a commitment. So please just don't take the hockey away. Don't do anything to eliminate the hockey or reduce it. It's an important part of our local culture, the regional culture, and that's all. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Diane Viallan. I'm a library media specialist at Fairfield Ludlow High School. I'm here to make you aware of some of the consequences in cuts to service from losing, if possible, if it's cut, one-third the LMC staff and the two computer lab paraprofessionals. If those positions should be eliminated, some of the consequences would include the library media center being closed before and after school. Presently, we serve over 75 students a day before and after school and those hours would be eliminated. In addition, the computer labs would have to be locked to drop in students. They would be available for classes and teachers to come. And the two computer professionals in my school, who have over 80 years of educational service between them, have served 25,000 students dropping in daily so far this year. The year isn't even completed yet. Another consequence of losing support staff in the computer labs is the strain on technology. You may not realize, but our technology staff was already cut this year by half a position. With no one to staff the labs, we'll have increased in damages and there will be increased downtime as the technology is waiting to be repaired. I just want to make you aware that all of the LMC staff, the paraprofessionals, the library media specialists, and even our secretary work directly with students supporting them throughout the day. Whenever we're not working with students, we're working with teachers so that they can work with students. Our main charge from the Board of Ed is to teach 21st century skills to the students and I just want you to be aware that one possible action of these cuts is that we will have less opportunity to, to service the students. Thank you.
Hey, you can all, after the meeting, clap all you want. It just delays it, okay? I appreciate it, but we have a lot of people who want to speak tonight, so go ahead, ma'am.
Good afternoon, good evening. I'm Denise Rader and I am a Fairfield resident. I live at 73 Louvain Street. I also happen to be a library media specialist and I serve at Osborne Hill Elementary School. And I was at the meeting last night, on Monday, your meeting of deliberations. I understand how difficult every single cent of decision that you have to make. However, I do believe in research. I do believe in 21st century skills. And I also believe in piloting programs. The program to eliminate some of the media techs at the elementary schools was indeed piloted this fall. It was deemed unsuccessful by all of the, I can't say all, most of the people who participated in the school buildings. And the opening was filled. So given that information, I would say reluctantly that if you had to choose between people taking care of the technology we have and buying new technology that is not even going to be taken out of a box, I would choose to have the people employed who will fix the technology we have. To me, the analogy is like I go by Fairfield Woods School every day. I watch all of the materials being delivered. What would it look like if those materials were delivered and there were no workers to finish the addition? So as difficult as your decision is and as much as we've denied technology over the years, I would really urge you to look once again at the equipment budget and have those people who are qualified keep the equipment going that we have. Thank you.
My name is Alana Sharlop. I was a former Ward student. I live at 1400 Fairfield Woods Road. They say kids who play on sports teams get higher grades, learn the value of hard work, and are generally well-rounded students. Well, all this may be true, but for me, a student who played all four years of high school hockey, I think it taught me a lot more than expected. Being a member of the high school co-op hockey team, I had a family, a group of friends I could count on, something I didn't find in other teams I played on. I learned the value of trust, strategy, and team determination, all things I never got a chance to be a part of on other teams because coaches were concerned with winning instead of team building and giving dedicated members a chance. When I was a captain of the '09-10 year, I hope to share my experience with my, with my team so that they could carry on the amazing traditions and spirit that existed among the teams before them. By ridding Ward and Ludlow of this opportunity, you have deprived a girl or a boy of a family, a place of belonging, a chance to grow as a person, and potentially a scholarship to a school that they could otherwise not afford. Sure, you could gain money if you choose to disregard any kind of statement that comes from any of these people, but think of us. We've dealt with every blow that has come to our program. As it ha, as it is, we have no freshman or JV teams, both which existed when I was a freshman. Why should our program be treated any differently than any other team? We should not be singled out by what may seem as low involvement numbers. Maybe girls wouldn't be so discouraged if they knew they were more than, if they knew there were more than 15 to 20 spots on a team because there's only one team. So for, for once, instead of thinking of our town's desire for unnecessary school expansions, potentially keeping a middle school intramural, which is unnecessary since we have a Parks and Recreation in our town, and freshman teams, I think we should think of teams that already exist. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Gabriel. I'm the captain of Fairfield Girls Ice Hockey Team and I live at 136 Dill Road. We understand that it is your intention to discontinue Fairfield Boys and Girls Ice Hockey Programs and moreover, the pay-for-play option. And although we understand that there are budgetary constraints, perhaps you can examine other ways to close the budget gaps. You see hockey as an expense item. However, to all of us, girls and boys, it represents teamwork, dedication, discipline, collaboration, and camaraderie. It builds excitement and loyalty within not only the school, but also the community. And it gives the schools recognition. There seems to be a perception among you that hockey is a low enrollment sport. That is a misconception on your part. Not only is it an athletic opportunity, but it is also an academic one. We hope that you will take what I've told you tonight to heart and we humbly ask you to reconsider your intentions regarding Fairfield Girls and Boys Ice Hockey. Thank you for listening and for your consideration tonight. Please do the right thing and keep Fairfield Girls and Boys Ice Hockey.
Hello, I'm, thank you. Hello, I'm Francisco Guillen. I live at 1043 Mill Hill Terrace.
Hello, I'm Cole Prowett Smith. I live at 47 Twin Brook Lane.
We are both fifth graders at Mill Hill School. We love to play basketball and we are really looking forward to trying out for the JV basketball team and intramural sports in middle school. But now, you make cut these JV Girls and Boys Basketball and Intramural Sports. If you cut these sports, there's going to be little time for physical activity. In middle school, there is no recess and in gym, we do not get 150 minutes of physical activity a week, which is recommended by the Association of Physical Educators. It is important that the district promotes a healthy lifestyle by providing kids a chance to participate in JV sports and intramural sports. Please, don't support our cuts.
I only have a few words to say, but basketball is probably the best teamwork sport ever built. Every single game, every player on the court gets the ball at least once and teamwork, for me at least, is probably one of the best lessons you could ever learn in life. So please do not cut this wonderful experience for all these kids to try out with. Thank you.
That's a tough act to follow. I'm Lisa Winjam and I live at 111 Borowski Road here in Fairfield. I just wanted to say a few words about pay-to-play, which I don't support. I was here the other night and I heard all the comments of the many board members here who also are very reluctant to support this option. And I was really struck by two things that I wanted to bring back. And one is not sacrificing some sports for all sports. And if, if it were a choice between eliminating freshman sports and eliminating hockey or pay-to-play for a year or two, then I think pay-to-play would be the preferable option. And I was also struck by in particular, something that Mrs. Iaccone said, and that is that when she left high school, her town had gone to pay-to-play and it's still that way. You know, the college admissions process being what it is, cuts to sports and extracurricular activities are very troubling to me as the parent of a high school student. My son is a two-sport athlete here in Fairfield and for our kids who play sports or who play an instrument or who are involved in theater or other curricular activities, maybe they don't shine in the classroom, but on that field or on that stage, that is their opportunity to shine. And that is their opportunity to get into a better college than they could based on their less-than-stellar academic talents. So I would ask that if we do have to go to pay-to-play, that this not become the new normal here in Fairfield and that next year, when you go back to that zero-based budget, that you come back with a full sports program with no pay-to-play. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Blasta Gresh. I am a word language teacher in a middle school. I teach French and Spanish. Please consider, I'm going to read comments from one of my colleagues. Please reconsider the grandfathering for the middle school redistricting in, in your budget discussion. This decision has negatively impacted the current budget and is putting program at risk. It would appear that it has become a sacred cow. You have chosen to fund transportation for two years, which brings no added value to our schools. It is difficult to continue policy of allowing students to stay in a building for three years when you are grossly diminishing the word language program there and in the elementary schools. What is your choice, funding buses or teaching language skills to students who live in a global society? That was a comment from Mrs. Roberto Krejci, 33-year resident of Fairfield, French teacher. And another comment from another of my colleague, Kristen Brogini, teaching the same school Spanish. In a world that is only growing smaller, I see no logic in taking away the instruction of foreign language from students, especially while other options are presented. I encourage you to consider these points and understand the opportunities you would be eliminating from the students of the Fairfield Public Schools if the proposed word language cuts follow through. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Karen Martel and I have been teaching at Fairfield Woods Middle School for 15 years. I'd like to just speak about the incredible impact that the elementary program has had on the middle school. We've all heard how the earlier a child begins a language, the more successful they will be at acquiring that language. And I've witnessed this firsthand with my students who come to me already knowing the basics. This year, I was able to read a short novel with my sixth graders. This gave them an opportunity to reinforce their literacy skills and begin to express their opinions in another language, not just learn lists of vocabulary. By seventh grade, our students were actually able to comprehend a great deal of the language and what they hear. We continue to reinforce their auditory skills that the elementary teachers have so successfully achieved. Because our students are able to understand more, they are more connected to the language and therefore, much more highly motivated. By decreasing the elementary program in half, we are agreeing to offer our world language students half an education and half an opportunity to become global learners. I'm sure that that is not the philosophy that our town would want to aspire to.
Hi, I'm Jay Walk. I live at 1157 Stratfield Road. Thank you. Currently, the liaison to the P, for the PTA to the First Selectmen's Office. I just wanted to start out by saying, I wanted to give kudos to, to Dr. Title. I feel that he is not listened to by a certain body of government here in our town. I also feel that we, we have one of the best superintendents in the state. He does, he does tremendous amount of work for us and yet, people don't listen to him. There's no need for the $800,000 cut. The Board of Selectmen has said it, the Board of Finance has said it, and the Board of Education has said it. It's not needed. So I'm not quite sure why a certain body, the RTM, has, has voted to cut another $800,000 out of the budget. Anyway, to go on from that, I also want to say that cutting powers from elementary schools and psychologists from elementary schools is going to be devastated, devastating for the children. Powers, in my school and Stratfield School, we use powers in our classes to take over for the teachers. We do not use substitute teachers. So you can see our record that that's what's been for a long time. So I just want to say that I hope that we can find, we can find, that we don't have to cut this money. Thank you.
If anyone wants to speak, line up because if no one's there, then the meeting is going to be adjourned, so keep lining up.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Pesowitz, 355 Sigwin Drive. I do not support pay-to-play for many reasons. When a decision was made to go to two high schools, a pro argument was that there would be more opportunities for students. Pay-to-play would change that. It could cause an economic burden at a time when, excuse me, that many can least afford to pay. There are many families that will not be able to get assistance that would need it, so their children may not get the opportunity. If we did go to pay-to-play, how would the coaches handle questions from parents such as, "I paid for my child to pay," excuse me, "play." "Why isn't he or she playing or getting more playing time?" Some of our sports hold outside conditioning classes that cost additional money. Add that on top of pay-to-play. If pay-to-play is put in place, will teams continue to hold fundraisers? I also do not support the elimination of offering freshman sports and eliminating the lower enrollment sports teams. Freshman sports give many, many kids the opportunity to play sports. It's a way for them to feel like they belong to their new school. It's a new beginning. It builds their school spirit and they make new friends. Sports keep, keeps kids busy, out of trouble, and helps keep them fit. Please continue to give Fairfield students these opportunities.
Hi, my name is Sean O'Leary. I live at 1071 South Pine Creek Road and I just wanted to show some support for the two young guys who came up here, Fran Guyen and Cole Prowett Smith. They happened to play for me in spring basketball over at the Cardinal Sheehan Center and so it took a lot of courage for them to come up here. I came over to kind of get a look at, at the passion of the folks here for whatever program is being eliminated and I feel strongly about athletics. My son Sean, who's also a fifth grader and a classmate with Fran and Cole, considers himself a student athlete and, and that's what he is. He's a, he's a very good student at Mill Hill. We're very proud of him, but you know, we've raised our kids to be, to have a very wide gamut of activities. The town of Fairfield and many towns around here, and speaking for Fairfield, it's a large community. You all remember, if we're talking about basketball here, which is what I'm supporting, JV basketball. The reason you need to keep it is simple. The movie Hoosiers, there were six kids on the basketball team. Fairfield, my son said, I think in the, his, his class in Fairfield Ludlow, Ludlow Middle School, be well over 250. And I've coached at, at Rec, I've coached at, at Wakeman, and I now coach at Sheehan. And to have five kids on a court and maybe five more, one team, when you have possibly 50, 60, 70, 80 kids coming out, does a disservice to the student athletes. So I advocate that you keep that program and frankly, I don't think it would cost that much and I wish you the best with the other programs as well.
My name is Lori Quick. I live at 22 Carlton Street and I am the Roger Sherman Board of Ed rep, one of them. I'm here to support the doctor Title's proposed elementary school staffing model. I think that that is a very important piece that he's introducing to the, in the budget for next school year. There is just a lack of resources on the elementary school level in the most basic areas of learning and it is so evident and also unbelievable in our school system. And I became personally aware of this when my daughter needed extra math help and I just assumed, I said to her teacher, "Well then, you know, get her extra help." And I was told that there was none. And that's a real negative. These are basic learning tools that our kids need as they advance into higher grade levels. And currently, the help that the kids do get is selective and it's, I'm sorry, I can't read. It's selective and principals have to beg, borrow, and steal to get these resources and only the kids who have the greatest need are helped and, you know, the middle-of-the-roads kids who just need that little extra push to get them over the top, they don't have that opportunity because of the lack of resources. And I think Dr. Title's staffing model really addresses this and I hope that this board supports that and doesn't cut that in lieu of some other things on the table, although I also think that pay-to-play sports, I don't want to see that go and hopefully, optimistically, we'll get this referendum passed and that will not have to be an issue.
Hi, Joe Seta. I live at 525 Hollydale Road, the infamous Butterfield.
I live at 525 Hollydale Road, the infamous butterfly neighborhood, if you remember from past meetings. I agree with no plan that takes away sports or pay-to-play. Look at the size of me. My children aren't going to be ice skaters and gymnasts. I mean, basketball is our sport. They're very passionate about it. If you look at my daughter's room, she's got a six-foot poster of Maya Moore. UConn is huge in basketball, and we're going to eliminate that sport. I think there are things we can do for the JV sports. Volunteer coaches, which I'd be the first to raise my hand, volunteer referees, that would eliminate a lot of costs. Childhood obesity is at an all-time high. The First Lady is on TV every day, advertising one hour a day, play sports. Now, you're going to eliminate that. Self-esteem issues. I've got three daughters, you know, girls are always struggling with self-esteem, you know, where do they find themselves? Are they good enough? Can they compete with the boys? But yes, I can tell my daughters that they can do anything. Now, I've got to look my daughter in the eye next year and tell her she can't play sports? So, I agree with no plan that'll take away sports at all. There are things we can do to eliminate costs and to save those costs, so please don't take that away from the kids.
My name is Sean Monday. I live at 143 Castle Avenue. I'm also a Spanish teacher at Tomlinson Middle School. I'm here to speak on behalf of the World Language Program and the potential cuts. The research indicating that the younger children are exposed to language, the more contact hours that they have, and the more exposure they have to the language, the more beneficial it is. So, to reduce that, cut it in half, to do what is proposed, would be a serious step backwards. It's not something that can easily be undone. So, any cuts that we could perhaps look at, let's look at cuts that can be easily undone. You know, this district, I think one of the things that makes it such a great district for everybody is the World Language Program and the fact that we start in fourth grade. So, I just ask you to consider those comments, and thank you for all your hard work.
I'm Christine Pisani, 40 Beth Drive. I first want to thank you for your dedication to our educational system, and I realize that deciding what cuts you have to make is choosing between evils. But I'd like to support a certain initiative of Dr. Title's, which is the Elementary Staffing Model. The new staffing model is in response to the federal and state mandates that have issued clear expectations for schools regarding their obligations to educate diverse groups of students well. The mandates encourage the implementation of research-based interventions that facilitate success in the education for a broad range of students. The models grew out of research suggesting that the traditional approaches to identifying students with learning disabilities were flawed, and that sometimes students ended up in special education when there was not a genuine disability, but other factors like inadequate general education and limited opportunities for extra help for these struggling students placed them in a special education program. Dr. Title's staffing model was developed to address these concerns and to improve the way our schools identify and provide resources to those students in our elementary schools that are not at grade level in language arts, math, or science. Among other things, this model brings a full-time certified teacher to each elementary school to support them in math and science. Currently, there's a teacher there two days a week. But unfortunately, at only two days a week, the students that are only very, very far behind in math receive any help. Research shows that the disparity between those who learn math with ease and those who struggle is widening. Experts estimate that for every two years of school, children with math disabilities acquire only one year of math proficiency. Children with math disabilities often reach a learning plateau in seventh grade and only acquire one year's worth of math proficiency in grades seven through 12, and there are more statistics. But Dr. Title's staffing model is to support these students when they can be helped in the elementary years when it's most important. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Bill Dunn, and I live at 205 Tuckahoe Lane. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Like all of you, I'm disappointed that we find ourselves in this difficult position. Rising enrollments require additional public support. I would urge the board to support the majority of Dr. Title's current proposals. The two concerns I have are kindergarten support and the maintaining of a pool of internal candidates for positions like elementary school principal. Given the economy, I believe that many parents will send their children to kindergarten when age-eligible, prepared or unprepared. Without enough support, some of these children will struggle, some may end up needing to repeat a school year or require additional future support. Ultimately, this will cost the town more money in the future than hiring, or than keeping the kindergarten paraprofessional for the next school year. Losing a teacher is hard, losing a capable teacher is harder, and losing a teacher that would make a great principal would be sad. I'm afraid that reducing the pool of good internal candidates for positions that will need to be filled in the future, like school principal, may save the town some money in the short term, but the lack of leverage, it's going to cost the town a lot more in the future. Finally, I don't like pay-to-play any more than anyone else, but I wouldn't take it off the table at this time. I don't see it as a silver bullet, but I do see it as a bullet, and I'd be reluctant to hold it in reserve. I don't think, I think that it unites all of us who are interested in a good public education, and it will provide additional support for a successful referendum. Thank you for your time.
Hi, Julie Gottlieb, 153 Applegate Street. I certainly wouldn't want to pick between the choices facing you. I've sat in an embarrassingly large number of these meetings and certainly understand that there are no good solutions. As Mrs. Albin has said, there are no crumbs to be found, and there is simply no money there. I understand how critical sports can be and the many benefits that sports provide. I played high school sports, as did all my siblings. I have a brother who attended college on a sports scholarship. I would not have otherwise done so. But if I have to pick between cuts to language arts, the elementary curriculum, media services, paras who reinforce learning, or any other services or programs that directly impact my child's education, I have to support those first. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristen Whitney. I live at 582 Shrub Oak Lane. I'm the PTA president at Burr. While not currently on Dr. Title's list of adjustments, I ask that you don't consider the elimination of the new elementary school staffing model. I know you have difficult choices to make here, but if you must choose between this program and extracurricular activities, or pay-for-play, put our youngest, most vulnerable, struggling readers, writers, and mathematicians ahead of these extras. The skills they learn will ensure the foundation of their educational experience. While sports are important, and I know I played high school and college sports, they're important in so many ways. If a child cannot read, or write, or add, sports become moot. If pay-for-play allows one more struggling elementary school student to get the extra help he or she needs, in my opinion, it's worth the cost. Thank you.
Hi, Emily Price, 625 Townhouse Road. I don't have anything written. I applaud you for all the hard work. I'm coming on behalf of my children. One is a freshman in high school. He is not a sports person. Freshman football, everyone is allowed to play. He met so many friends, got a true high school experience because of sports. Had it not been, he would have been in a book at home. I don't know about pay-for-play. I still donate to the clubs because I'm used to paying for everyone. I don't know how you're going to get the new uniforms. I don't know how you're going to, you know, do the buses and et cetera, but it's so integral to the whole high school experience. How are we going to compete on resumes with novants, and everything that you're supposed to write down as an extracurricular if you can't do it? I'm also talking about the languages. My little one said, "Mommy, we teach people to speak English, but we can't be taught to speak to them in their own language." I'm from a multicultural, overseas family, and the biggest thing is differences, diversity, culture. If we start taking out these little things that define Fairfield and our children going forward, that there is differences, there are differences, I should say. I just, you know, these are words for my children, they're not for me, and if it is pay-for-play, fine, but we are going to have to somehow make it up for those that can't. Are we going to beef up juvenile detention halls and demerit systems and police? What are these kids going to do if they can't afford to participate? There's got to be some other way. So, thank you. Good luck.
Good evening. Suzanne Meska, 123 Rygate Road. First off, I just want to say I support the hockey program at the high school. As an old hockey cheerleader, I can't let hockey go away. I also can't believe I'm standing in Fairfield and we are discussing the potential of pay-for-play in high school and curriculum changes of world languages. I cannot even believe that those were some of the options. So, I went back and I pulled the 192 pages of the budget, and I'd like to point out some of the things that I think maybe we should revisit, one being mileage reimbursement at $80,000, along with conferences. I don't know. If we're worrying about having these high school kids have to pay to play sports, maybe we can pay for our own gas, and we can go to less conferences. On the other side, I thought this was going to be kind of mean to say, but now I'm listening to this elementary school pilot program, and I believe that we pay $560,000 for instructional improvement coordinators at each of the elementary schools. As Mr. Carey had pointed out to me, these are the people who are supposed to help the students who are caught, who don't have the help, need the help in math, and who need help with the curriculum. Yet, I'm hearing we don't have that happening. So, I'm proposing on the instructional improvement coordinators. Since we have math, we have music teachers and art teachers who can go across town to different elementary schools, why do we need an instructional improvement coordinator at each of the elementary schools? Can't you have one that would cover two schools? In addition, we have part-time clerical support at the elementary schools. I'm sorry, that is $135,000. I think the secretaries might just have to help themselves a little bit. The part-time clerical support is not helping the teachers. They are lined up in the halls with all of their papers, making their own copies. So, maybe, okay. Although, excuse me, assistant superintendent for $97,000? I think Mr. Boyle's done a fine job. A .5 would be more than enough.
Good evening. My name is Megan Flynn. I live at 87 Coral Drive. I'm a freshman at Ward High School and a member of the girls varsity ice hockey team. I'm here tonight to ask that you do not decide to cancel the hockey programs at the high school level. Over the past several years, the Board of Education has brought to our town's attention the importance of the health and fitness of the students. The Board of Education has discussed the importance of a well-balanced diet and exercise. By cutting a sports program, you would be contradicting the goal of wanting teens to be more healthy through taking away our opportunity to exercise. For some, like me, the ice hockey program provides the only sport we play all year, an exercise program that we participate in, up to five times a week in a high-intensity environment. While the program has been referred to as small, our sport is also one of the fastest-growing with rising interest each year. In the 2009-2010 season, the girls' ice hockey team only had 12 players. For our 2010-2011 season, we had 28 girls on the team with only three seniors. Our commitment to the sport can be seen in the offseason just as much as throughout the season. Girls on our team are currently attending clinics run through the Wonderland of Ice, and most of us play in a spring league in Shelton. All are offseason activities that our families pay for. Most of the girls' family bought full hockey equipment so they could play for four years, and as you probably know, the equipment isn't cheap. As we grew up in this town, we are used to paying for not just this sport, but for our involvement in all the sports through Parks and Rec Department, Wakeman, and various travel programs. While pay-to-play is a change at the high school level, it is not new for families who participate in sports, and it is better than the alternative of eliminating some sports in favor of others. I think it is also important to note that the girls' ice hockey team, as well as the boys, is one of the few teams that represent the entire town and not just one school. We are a co-op team between both Ludlow and Ward. Our jerseys safe through our fields. We represent the entire town and do so with pride. I hope that you consider these points when making your decision. Thank you.
Good evening. Jim Lee, Unqua Road. How long have I got? Two? Forever. When I left the board four years ago in my valedictory, I said that you would not see me in the audience, and if you did, it meant that you were in trouble. And I dare say I think you are, but it's, I did some, I looked at some different numbers, not dollars and cents particularly. What I discovered was that, if you remember, I had always thought that the Board of Ed budget ought to increase by the enrollment increase compounded by the cost of living. In other words, if the cost of living was the same, you have more students, it costs you more. If the number of students stays the same, cost of living goes up, it should cost you more. From 2005-06 until the fiscal year about to end, enrollment went up 10%. The CPI went up 15.7%. The budget over that period went up 19%. So, what that means is that in constant dollars per student, you have already sustained a real cut of about 6%. It's really too late and pointless to say how that happened or who did it to us, but here we are. You have what are lightheartedly called tough choices to make, and whatever you do, somebody's not going to like it, and if you're doing some of the things that are being talked about, I'm not going to like it. I wanted to say a word for elementary foreign language because it's a subject near and dear to my heart. I worked on it. We lost that program in a referendum in the early '70s. It took us 23 years to get it back. And then, you know, after multiple attempts, the point of elementary foreign language is that children, if they learn a foreign language before adolescence, if they start to learn it, then they have a better chance to pick it up later on. And if you find yourself in the position of needing to pick up some phrases in, say, conversational Pachto or Dari, like, "I'm an American, I'm here to help you," or "Drop the gun," you're going to wish you'd had Spanish in elementary school.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ling. Your time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and good night.
Yes, Mrs. Albin.
Hi, Richard Joss, I'm Carriage Drive in Southport. I want to thank Mrs. Albin for having this meeting you recommended tonight. It's great to have public out advocating for the budget, and I do think everyone should be reminded on June 14th, everyone can advocate by voting. Tom Mooney has, in his legal writings, that the Board of Education can advocate for the referendum at his meeting, so I'm encouraging you guys to speak out now, often, and publicly, because without your support, any restoration of funds won't take place. So, please do so. You know, I can give you Tom Mooney's legal dissertation. Couple things on pay-to-play, you know, it's kind of a forcing the parents to pay for things, and I guess the thought would be analogous to the grandfather. Want to give the parents the opportunity to drive their kids to school and save $300,000 and have all of that cost be borne by them for their car and gas and whatnot, and we save jobs. So, it seems to me, you know, let's get, so much in Sacred Cow, I think we should really look closely of how do we get what we want to achieve, the kids in the school, and give the parents some opportunity to make a choice for themselves and save the school, you know, the sports. One thing I will say, if you're going to replace the pay-to-play, then you should tell the parents soon what the options are so they can come advocate again for how draconian those next cuts will be, because they may be worse. I think the class-size guidelines was the immediate impact of the next cut below, you know, the pay-to-play. The last thing is this, I guess, it was mentioned before by the FEA president, that, you know, we did a great job passing the burden to all of the different schools and the kids and the parents, but there's no cut at Central Office. So, you know, again, do something, little, whatever it is, to share the pain. Thanks.
Hi, my name's Joyce Gallagher, and I live at 150 Stony Brook Road. I would like to please beg you not to cut freshman sports. I have a ninth grader whose happiest time of the day is practice. I have a seventh grader not wanting to go to any private school because he knows he will be able to m- he will be able to make the Ludlow team. Boys need sports, and I'm afraid if you eliminate sports, you're really going to have a lot of troubles in town with kids hanging out and doing what they shouldn't be doing. And my last thing is, they push them in middle school to no child left behind, run the mile, get active, get healthy, and then if they get to high school and they have nothing to do, there's no gym. Well, there is gym, excuse me, but I just think you can't cut freshman sports. And they're so important, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Just for the record, I just want to make sure that people understand that the reductions from Dr. Tidal have several items on it, and there is reductions at Central Office. So it's important that we have the correct information, and I'm not blaming the previous speaker on that. So, thank you.
Good evening, school board members, and thank you for your time. My name is Karen McNeil and I reside at 2801 Morehouse Highway. I'm a proud parent of two daughters currently attending our public schools, a seventh grader and a fifth grader. And additionally, I'm an extremely proud educator. I served 12 years in Norwalk as a secondary Spanish teacher, as well as a high school counselor, and currently I'm really happy and proud to be an elementary Spanish teacher here. So as you can see, I'm here. My reasons are for twofold. The most recent budget cuts will affect my daughters directly. They are very active in sports currently, and they're not the best, so cutting the freshman and the JV teams would be detrimental to them. I also have a daughter that was picked up in the elementary school model for reading, and she was helped quite swiftly with her reading needs. In addition to that, I would like to speak on behalf of our Spanish program that I am so proud of, and I see many parents here, and I think they know how much I love being a part of that program every day. When I came to Fairfield, I was so impressed with the elementary Spanish program, the level of proficiency that these students acquire at age eight, nine, and 10 blew me away after being a high school teacher for so many years. What my elementary school students are able to accomplish in our contact time over two years is that equal to what my Norwalk students were able to do, Level 1 Spanish. My seventh grader this year was so excited to read a chapter book in seventh-grade Spanish. She was elated about this, and I did not have the opportunity to do that or my students didn't have the ability to read a book until Level 3 Spanish. Our elementary program is what makes our students so successful in their language, as well as their desire to learn how to speak a language and learn about other cultures. Cutting the elementary Spanish program is not only going to cut our program, but it's going to affect your middle school program as well as your high school program. I know I don't need to tell you that. So over the last two years, the other thing I want...
May have time. Thank you very much.
Is it already?
Yeah, it goes fast.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Brad Weinstein, Shelter Rock Road. And tomorrow morning about 4:45, I'll be waking up, not to go to the city, but to take my son skating for a hockey clinic up in Milford. See, hockey players, unlike any other sport, we can't just go outside and shoot hoops or have a catch. We have to rely on ice time. Hockey players are the most passionate athletes around. Look around. Half this room are hockey players. Low enrollment? There's no such thing as low enrollment in hockey. All you have to do is go to one of the games, the co-op games, and see the passion that the players play with and that the fans and the students come to support. Since four years ago, that's all my son has talked about, going to play at Ward, Ludlow, the co-op team, and there's no other place to play. If he can't play, if these people can't play on the team, there's nowhere else to go. You can't just join a Babe Ruth league. There's nowhere else to go. They'd have to go to Prep or wherever to go and play, or Notre Dame, play hockey somewhere else. So I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, we have to find a way to make hockey work. We have to find a way to make freshman sports work. We have to find a way to make this work so that we can keep the spirit of this town and keep the players playing. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Connor Sharlop. I am a freshman at Fairfield Ward High School. I live at 1400 Fairfield Woods Road. The hockey program, apparently what it said in the paper was that it had low enrollment, and I find that to be a false statement. Because we have a hockey team. I played on the team this year. Twenty kids dress. I think there was almost 30 kids or 40 kids that did not dress for any of the games. So I don't see how that would be low enrollment. I know the girls, had a lot of girls go out for the team. You know, if you got rid of a program like this, kids, we don't have anything else to do at the time. I've been skating since I was two, playing hockey since I was three, and I know that everyone else on my team, we all have been playing, working hard so that when we got to the high school level, it would be our time to finally prove all of our hard work. And if you were to get rid of a program like hockey or any other sport, all the kids who played for all this time, we will lose our achievements, our goals, our dreams of playing farther, going on to a college level. Some kids even want to go pro. It would diminish a lot of enthusiasm that we have for school and everything else. I mean, I know that a lot of kids do well in school who play sports and kids who don't do so well who play sports. But I know also that a lot of kids don't like school very much, and if you were to get rid of a sport, I know that if I go to school every day, I get to play my sport after school. If I don't go to school, I don't get to play my sport. If there's no sport, there is a chance that I just wouldn't want to go anymore. There would be no point because there would be nothing for me to do afterwards. I know a lot of kids that I've played sports with that have gotten into a lot of trouble. They've gone down bad paths and they made bad choices. And I think that getting rid of a program altogether would lead a lot of kids down bad paths, and that would just be very bad for the town.
Your time's up, and we certainly got your point. Thank you.
My name is Donna Boyle. I live at 159 Maylands Road, and I'm here tonight to talk about our freshman athletes, who is incidentally number about 24 teams among the two high schools and 500 students. In a world where the majority of our kids are overweight and parents and schools have begun taking initiatives to reduce this trend, sports should not be considered expendable. Sports provide more than just athletics. They're a means of socialization, a way of fitting and belonging to a group that has the same interests and goals as you. They're a place where many incoming freshmen make the bonds they will have for the duration of their high school careers. Sports provide a positive and safe place for kids to be after school. Without freshman sports, many of our kids will be idle and looking for ways to fill their time. As we all know, too much free time is never a good thing. Physical activity is a good way to relieve stress and reduce depression. The transition to high school from middle school can be a very stressful time. Studies prove that kids who are involved in sports do better in school. They are more motivated and they feel like they're a part of something. They are more likely to do well and graduate high school. Studies show that kids, especially girls, have higher self-esteem and body image when they participate in sports. Playing sports teaches boys, but especially girls, how to take risks and be aggressive. Sports help develop teamwork and leadership skills. Kids quickly learn that they need to work together as a team to be successful. Motor skills, strategic thinking, and even math skills are learned by playing sports. Students build strategic thinking as they figure out plays and the best way to get around a player or score a goal. Math skills are used as they calculate scores and figure stats. Studies prove that regular exercise increases quality of life. Children who exercise are more likely to continue this practice into adulthood. I'm concerned that if you get rid of freshman sports, a lot of these kids that would never have made JV or varsity might not go out in their sophomore or junior years for sports. We're losing a whole group of kids. I'm also concerned that we're not looking ahead. When I was in high school, my high school went on austerity for one year. We lost buses and we had a play-for-pay option.
Have a time. Thank you.
I'm just asking that you give our freshman kids the same respect in sports that you gave to our sixth and seventh graders when you grandfathered and provided their buses.
Good evening. I'm Carolyn Markato. I live at 3845 Park Avenue. I am the former coordinator for the library, media, and technology resource teachers in Fairfield, and I'm ending my second year of retirement, which is lovely. I have not been to a board meeting this year because when I walked away, I really walked away. But I felt compelled to come out tonight for a variety of reasons. When I first came into the district as a library, media specialist in an elementary school, I came in in the beginning of the technology rush, the information age, and I wrote it as hard and wild as I could. However, I am really concerned now about the fact that our technology assistants that keep our machinery in working condition, that many of those positions are being eliminated. And I would like to second what my former colleague Denise Rader said earlier this evening. I really would encourage you, and I can't believe I'm saying this, I would really encourage you to stop purchasing technology and maintain the people to keep our current pieces in working condition. I feel that this is so terribly important. Even with the staff that we have, I have seen computers sit in boxes for months in schools during my experience. So I would ask you to please restore those positions, keep what we have, and work in order. And then, as the time moves along, let's increase our technology, but do it in a thoughtful way through a pilot program. Second of all, I'd like to mention the fact that the high school library, media program is being decimated by a third cut of the staff. I think that many people today do not realize that library, media specialists are teachers. And gone is the day when you said, "It's the third book on the left." Please restore the paraphernalia to them so that they can continue to teach and not be people that you pay high price to check out books.
Hi, I'm Ann Pascal, President of the FEA. I've spoken on several occasions at several of these meetings, so I'll be brief. First, I would like to share my perception of what is the cut at the district level. The instructional improvement grant writer, whose office happens to be at Central Office, is a teacher position, I believe, who is a member of the FEA. So from that regard, that is truly not what I perceive to be an administrative cut. I'm on record as saying that instruction should come before buses, and I'll reiterate that. And my third point, as far as media, technology, and library, by removing the clerical staff at both high schools, we now have six writing labs that are going to be shuttered except for when a teacher brings a class down. They're currently staffed by two pairs at each high school. So you now have all that technology, all that equipment, and no one to staff those rooms. And the children, when they get their papers assigned, have nowhere to go to complete them. So you probably need to take a look at that again. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Liz Mojar. I live at 95 Rose Mary Ave. And just a little bit of background about myself. I was a lacrosse coach at Ward High School for eight years. I am now presently a club lacrosse coach based in Wilton. I volunteer at Wakeman, and I also work at Sportsplex here in town. Donna Boyle, is that your name? I 100% agree with everything she said, so I won't address that. I just want to address a little bit about the social-emotional aspects sports provide for girls. You know, I look at this hockey team over there, I see some of my former players. You know what? This is bonding them. Teens need this. If they didn't have this, where would they be? You know, eating a bag of Doritos, watching MTV? I don't know. You know, we don't want that. Just real quick, during my eight years at Ward, I had a player whose father was terminally ill, and she suffered from mental depression. And she had a place to go every single day, a sense of normalcy for her. Did she play very much? No. But that's not why she was part of the team. Sports give children another place to go. A place of normalcy, a place of security, a place of passion. So I beg you, please do not cut freshman sports. Thank you.
Susan Brown, 170 Pemburn Drive. I sat through a series of board meetings last year where we went around and around and around and around about breathalyzer policy. And during those meetings, we all heard what kind of risks are out there for our kids. And I think eating a bag of Doritos might be one of the better risks because those of us who know the risks in high school know that more than likely than not, they'll be in the parking lot smoking a joint. So I have spoken about pay-to-play a lot. I think that the strong athletes will survive pay-to-play. I don't support pay-to-play. I think it will most hurt the kids who come into high school as freshmen and have an opportunity to participate, to take a risk that they might not otherwise take because there's no-cut teams and there's no financial barrier. And if you put that financial barrier there and you take away the freshman teams that give them a no-cut opportunity, they're going to walk away, and it will hurt them. They will not have the experience. They are at risk to get involved in a lot of things that aren't good. I'd also like to identify myself as the President of the Boys' Ice Hockey Booster Club. I've been a hockey parent for a long time. I'm really, really proud of these guys for coming out and speaking. I've sat in the rink with them for years. And I just want to clear the record on the misconception that the boys' ice hockey program has low numbers. I can't speak to the girls' program, but I can speak to the boys' program. I think it's eighth year that we've had a co-op hockey team, and I was told by the coach that the athletic director has been informed by the C I A C that there are so many kids playing hockey that they're at risk of losing their developmental co-op status. There's so many kids, they can't fit on the ice. So there are no low numbers in hockey.
Thank you.
My name's Trigvis Amberd, 365 Penfield. You asked how many people were going to speak tonight. I said it depends on what gets said. I had nothing planned because I wanted to see what got said. I can tell you, I've always been a student-athlete. I've also been a very troubled student. I had to get assistance in just about everything. I wish I had had help with a foreign language early on. Then I wouldn't have had the excuse that I can't handle it. Math, reading, you name it. Competed at almost every level, including NCAA college-level sports. The fact that we're talking about taking anything away just turns my stomach. It makes my voice shake. I don't know how we've gotten here. It really doesn't matter, except that I think we've got to think about what will least impact the children. And I will catch up to speed and look at the budget. I just want, and I know that's why you guys are on the board, is to protect our children. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to give all these people a chance to air their opinions. And please, just do the best you can to cut nothing. And if we have to have a referendum or whatever the hell it is we got to do, you know, tell us. We'll figure... I mean, maybe we should have not put a new cedar roof on the town hall.
Alan Sharlop, 1400 Fairfield Woods Road. I think I'm actually the last person, so maybe you'll grant me more than two minutes. I don't know. I actually had two kids who spoke tonight. They were both on the varsity ice hockey team. My daughter graduated and played two varsity sports. My son looked forward to getting into high school for an opportunity to do the exact same thing. My concern about removing sports is you'll remove what you saw tonight, which is young people coming here with tremendous confidence. I could see by the looks on most of your faces how impressed you were that young people would be willing to come here and speak in front of you and in front of an audience of this size. They have that confidence. They have that confidence because they've been offered a chance to play school sports, sports as youngsters, teams on the outside. It builds confidence, it builds strength. As Mrs. Brown said earlier, it does give them something to do after school where they're not hanging out outside and possibly getting into trouble. Earlier this year, I was at a very insightful evening at Ward High School where they spoke about alcoholism and the tremendous dangers, and they had numerous people speaking, and I think the alcohol problem is starting to get out of control. And having a place for young people to go after school with regards to sports is very important. These youngsters are coming out of middle school. It's a huge transition into high school. By being allowed to participate on a team, they don't go down that bad path. They have an opportunity to be with other kids who are steering them in the right direction and forcing them to get their work done, get their grades up so that they can come and play. The other point, the last point I wanted to make, was about hockey parents. We've all been paying dearly since our kids were very, very young. We know the cost of hockey. We would never have started that sport had we not known that cost, so that therefore we would understand if there was a cost to continue to have our kids play and represent the town of Fairfield. Thank you.
Elizabeth Kelly, 300 Flintlock Road. As a member of multiple PTAs in town, I'm aware of the difficult choices that face the Fairfield School District. I'm here tonight to voice my support of Dr. Tidal's elementary school staffing model. The academic expectations placed on elementary school students continue to increase, and the amount of remedial support for our young, struggling learners is inadequate. I urge you to support Dr. Tidal's vision for the elementary school staffing model and the needed certified staff to assist our youngest and most needy learners to feel success and not to fall behind in our academic goals for them. The return on the investments of our young students will prove to be a tremendous cost savings as they move on to middle school and high school. Thank you.
I think this is our, anybody else is maybe our last speaker, so go ahead.
Hi, Krista Doherty, 820 Gilbert Highway. You'll note that I wrote my thing on the back of a Wakeman roster. So sports is important to our family. I hope you don't cut sports. I hope you don't eliminate any freshman sports. I think it's important to include intramurals and JV. I think sports are important to children as well as education, and I don't want education cut either. I don't want to lose teachers. But I think there's better places to take the cuts from, perhaps some cosmetic maintenance projects that I saw in the budget. How about considering cutting all late buses? We've all carted our kids from one place to another or found, you know, car pools. We've all done it for the whole elementary school years. We can still do it through high school and middle school. So cut the late buses. How about eliminating buses for the kindergarten, the extended-day kindergarten? That's an extra cost that I know some schools probably don't use or do by school-to-school basis. Offer the program, but just have the car, you know, they have to pick up their own children. Don't eliminate the program, but just cut the busing out of it. For a small amount of children, you can save the busing. Those are some ideas. Please consider.
Hi, my name's Paul Barlow. I'm a sophomore at Ludlow High School. I play on the varsity hockey team. I just want to say that hockey is the single most important thing to me in my life. Yes, I do see college hockey in my future, and I have to say that the high school is that step that I need to take in order to play college hockey. I look around and I see like a lot of my friends here, Charlop, you talked, Mikey and Chris. Hockey, I got all my friends from hockey, actually. To be completely honest, I'm actually married to Mike on Facebook. But yeah, hockey, I've gotten, I've met so many important friends. And the seniors this year, they left, I've learned a lot from them. And also, hockey, we spend so much time in the rink that there really is no other time to do, you know, like drugs or anything else like that. I've never smoked, I've never drank. There's so many other kids in my school, like a very large portion, not on the hockey team, that do smoke or drink. And there's just, there's so many just bad things I could get into if I wasn't playing hockey, you know. This morning, I was offered a joint before school, and yeah, that's it.
My name is Tina Gabriel. I'm at 136 Dill Road. And I really didn't have any comments prepared for today, but I have to say that I was moved by everything that everyone said. I think what, when I came to Fairfield many, many, many years ago, what drew me here was the education system and the community. And to sit here in the audience today, and maybe, you know, shame on me for not paying attention to the 192 pages, and what got us here today, I guess that's not important. What is important, though, is that there were some bad decisions, bad fiscal decisions that were made. There were a lot of short-sighted decisions that were made that, for me, are pretty much basic math. You can't plan for something today that you cannot afford to have tomorrow. And I don't know who it was that did it, I really don't care, but at the same time, people need to be held accountable, accountable whether you're in the RTM or wherever you are. And I think what really disappoints me and hurts me today, when I look around and I see all these kids here supporting, in support of their sports and their education, it's kind of sad that we're sitting here talking about cutting back on Spanish, language arts, cutting back on sports, cutting back on teamwork, leadership, and all the good things that attract people to Fairfield and in this community. So I have to ask you, I guess to plead with you, that you'll make the right decisions and you won't cut any of these important things. There are plenty, plenty of ways. You can go back, sharpen your pencils, when every little penny counts, and a penny taken from each and every little thing at the end of the day makes a big difference. So please, hear all these folks here, especially the kids that took the time out, because that's what sports do in a lot of ways. They bring kids together, and they wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't important for them. So thank you.
Craig Curly, 109 Lakewood Drive. Much like many of the people here tonight, I too didn't prepare anything to speak specifically about. I actually followed the budget hearings through the Board of Finance process and through the RTM process, but actually only a couple of days ago, found out that pay-for-play and some of the issues related to freshman sports was on the table. Ironically, I was late tonight, and so I apologize if I repeat some of the things that some of the other folks already stated, but the reason I was late was because of the extracurricular activities at Jennings. They had a school program, as well as, I believe, Roger Ludlow did as well, and North Stafford did as well. So my point on that is, I'm sure while the attendance is strong tonight, I'm very certain that it very likely would have been much stronger had there not been other conflicts with the school-related kids. Having said all that, I was a student athlete all through my school career, and I agree with all the sentiments in terms of helping develop kids in a positive light and keeping kids out of trouble, or at least giving them a better chance to. Feel strongly about that. I'm a board member for the Fairfield National Little League, as well as chairman of the Golf Commission for the town of Fairfield. So I firmly believe in sports, but I don't envy your position. I understand the budget challenges that you're facing. There's no question that you've got some tough decisions to make. But in terms of just other thoughts that cross my mind as I was standing here, if I were thinking about moving into Fairfield, and the last person just spoke about that, and I had school-aged kids, I might not think about coming to Fairfield if pay-for-play or freshman sports was not an option. So now I'm worried about my real estate values, and that's a real concern that should go beyond, well beyond whether we have kids or not. And that's a real deal.
Craig, I gotta stop you. Time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Vlandis. I live at 30 Woben Court. I'm the mom of three boys, two sixth graders and one second grader. I totally agree with all the things that have been said this evening. I'm in full support of the high school sports, the freshman sports, but please also remember those junior high sports. My boys looked up to their friends, siblings who participated, they went to the basketball bashes, they themselves, once they got into sixth grade, made the team. Together, they bonded with their friends, they bonded with other kids that weren't even on the team. It creates such self-confidence, they're good students. It gave them a group, a belonging, and I think that's really important, and I think it starts at the junior high level, or junior high, excuse me, middle school level. It gives them a cohesive unit in order to make friends and to participate socially as well. Forgive me, I'm a little nervous. I also feel which, whatever way you go, even if it's pay-for-play, which I'm not in total support of, include that with the middle schoolers, as well as even Wakeman, actually, I mean, as a suggestion, is Wakeman sometimes gets kids that need to do community service and act as coaches, like Wakeman does. Perhaps they do that for the JV team at middle school. It's just an option. The other thing as far as world language, kids, if they're exposed to this at a younger age, develop a tongue for it. It is more difficult when you get older. You need that repetitiveness, you need that constant learning and exposure to it to really retain it and continue it throughout your life, as well as, these kids need to be bilingual in this world that we're in. I mean, we'll be lucky when our kids graduate from college that they get a job in this country. They need to be global.
Time, Tiffany. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Marie Levine, 25 Cedar Hurst Lane. I'm Canadian, so therefore hockey, I don't know what we're going to do if hockey is ever taken out of our life. My son is already like, you know, like bad, like I don't know, he's losing it. And I'm French, so like, you know, language affected by it too. So this is great. I just wanted to like say something. Me and my family, when we have an issue with money, we don't buy new things. We don't do renovation on our house, or we don't hire a dude to do the lawn because we have no money, so we decide to do it on our own. So I know that you have new project that seems really nice, and it will be really good for elementary school, that new project, but can we hold on on new thing until the situation gets back to normal and then we have more money, a year that maybe we have a little bit more money? Like, we look like we are in a bad situation right now, really bad. We have no money, we need to cut. So could we just keep what we have and try to deal with what we have and not try to implement new stuff and just wait until in a couple years when things are better? Because it's going to get better. Like, I mean, we're at the bottom of the wave. Eventually, we'll go up again, I hope, like we all hope, like, you know? And, you know, like I say, I'm Canadian, so at this point, I'm really thinking, oh my God, what am I going to do with my son next year? Because the only thing he knows is hockey. He's been playing hockey, we're watching hockey. I don't know, I think my husband may go into a depression, like if they cut this hockey program, because really, like, I'm not sure he's going to be able to go to work anymore. So I would tell you, not only for hockey, I'm joking about hockey because this is our life as Canadian, we do other stuff too. But, you know, we go to school and, you know, but I'm just telling you, reconsider. Try to keep what we have and wait to do new project or new elementary project. So that's just my, because that's what I do with my budget when we have trouble. Thank you.
Now, I have a tough act to follow. Mike Varga, 595 Rock Ridge Road in Fairfield. I went to McKinley School and Andrew Ward High School, and my daughters went to Jennings and Ward. I was involved in sports, they were involved in sports. I was involved in the foreign language program at the elementary school, they were involved in foreign languages. I was involved in music, they were involved in music. I cannot believe the condition that we're in now. This is not Dr. Tidal's problem, he's done a great job. I don't envy him having come into the school system and having to make these decisions. It's not the board's issue. You've done everything you can to communicate to the town the need to support this budget. I think the problem is now with the town. Everyone here and the people who are not occupying these chairs have to make sure that referendum succeeds, and that's message number one. And message number two, of course, is next year when the budget comes up, we have to make sure that we're not on the defensive again for the third or fourth year, but that this town gets back on the track of supporting education to the point where we're all proud of sending our kids to school. Thank you.
I'm Carolyn Meyer, and I live at 588 Catona Drive. I just started ice hockey, and honestly, I'm not too good yet, but I've definitely made so many good friends, and as you can see, we're all sitting together fighting this together. They already took away the JV and freshman teams, and each year, the boys' and girls' teams raise between $12,000 and $15,000. So that could definitely help pay for some of the costs. Both boys' and girls' teams have such strong spirit that we should not be getting rid of.
And my name is Casey Crowley, and I live at 2043 Congress Street. And as Carolyn said, we raise a lot of money, and also, I know that hockey is really usually thought of as something that you pay for. I remember being 11 years old, and I guess at some point, there was some rumors about it possibly being pay-to-play, and I remember asking my mom, isn't it already pay-to-play? Because it was just kind of the norm. And also, as Carolyn said, our spirit is really high. We have between 25 and 30, 28 girls on our team, and all of them come to every single game regardless of if they're dressing or not. And so clearly, that reflects some sort of desire to play and learn and possibly play throughout the years. And it's also teaches a lot of things, any sport, regardless of it's hockey, or basketball, or sailing, or whatever it wants to be. It teaches skills that are needed regardless of where you go in life, teaches self-confidence. I'm under five feet tall, and I get on ice skates every week and play against girls who are 6'2" or whatever they are. And people don't expect it to happen, and it's one of the reasons why I can stand up and speak in front of all of you, being the tiny girl from Fairfield that I am. And it also teaches teamwork, which you will need wherever you are in life. And that's also something that is taught in class as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else lined up, so thank you for coming out tonight. I take a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, guys. I just wanted to thank you all and introduce myself.